I call this, it is Monday, October 25th at 6:01 PM. I call this meeting of the Clear Creek Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting has been duly called and that its notice has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. And we will start with... We will start with the state financial accountability rating. Good evening, Ms. Benzai.
So tonight, we are going over our annual financial accountability management report. And I just wanted to note that this report is actually based on data as of August 31st of 2020. So the state will get our audited financial statements and gather the data needed to prepare the rating. So this rating system has been around since 2001, and we received our official or our preliminary notification back in August of our rating, which is above standard achievement. We haven't received our final notification from the state yet. They give districts time to... They give districts time to appeal their rating if they need it. We did not need to appeal, but we're still waiting on the final rating from the state. So there's actually three types of indicators. As we go through the presentation, you'll see there's actually 20 indicators that are used to provide the rating. The first five indicators are critical indicators, and any no response on these would result in basically failing the system. So we passed all of those five indicators. Solvency indicators are indicators six through 14. They look at our cash flow requirements and meeting those needs. And then finally, indicators 15 through 20 rank our financial competence. So I'll go through each of these indicators, and I'll point out the specific ones where we may not have achieved the highest score that was available. So indicators one and two, basically, indicator one just shows, did we complete our annual financial report and submit that report to the TEA by the January 28 deadline? And of course, we did. And did we have an unmodified opinion on our financial statements? So our financial statements at August 31st, 2020 consisted of a clean audit. Indicators three and four. Was the school district in compliance with the repayment terms on our debt agreements at fiscal year-end? And we were. We also made all timely payments to the Teacher Retirement System, Workforce Commission, IRS, and other governmental agencies. So we were able to pass that indicator. Indicator five was not scored in 2019-20. And indicator six was, did our, we have an average change in fund balance over three years. It was less than 25% decrease, and we easily passed that indicator. We had, actually had a 6.67% increase in fund balance. Looking at indicator seven, was the number of days of cash and current investments in the general funds sufficient to cover our operating expenditures? We scored eight out of 10 points on this particular indicator. We had 89 points, which is the same as last year. Because we have growth in our debt with supporting our construction of new facilities and renovations, our debt is higher and causes it more, it's more difficult to achieve a higher score on that particular indicator. And was our debt service coverage ratio sufficient to meet the required debt service? Yes, we scored eight out of 10 points on that as well. Looking at indicators 13 and 14, the state looks at our administrative cost ratio and what we spend on that. We did spend less than the threshold that the state sets at 4.27% of our budget, which is well below the state's threshold of 8.55%. And it also looks at our, if we had a decline in our student to staff ratios over three years, we did not have that 15% decline, so we passed that indicator as well. 15 and 16, the state looks at our average daily attendance and ensures that we were within our range when we submit pupil data estimates to TEA. That's what they base their funding, their cash funding on us every year in their budget, and we passed that indicator as well. And then we also have to submit our annual financial data to the state every year, and they compare what we submitted with our annual financial report to ensure there's no variances. So we also easily pass that indicator. Indicators 17 and 18 look at our annual financial reports. They look at if we had any instances of material weaknesses that were noted or any instances of material noncompliance in our audit. And we had clean audits for this fiscal year, so we easily pass those indicators. And the last two indicators look at if we posted required financial information on our website. That would include tax data, budget data, financial data, and we, of course, meet those requirements. And then the final indicator looks at if school board members discussed property values at a school board meeting within 120 days before we adopted the budget. And we did, the school board did discuss those property values at that board meeting. So this particular report that we do each year does have some required disclosures. It is required to disclose the superintendent and board member travel expenditures for that fiscal year. It's required to disclose if there was any outside compensation received by the superintendent, which there was not. And then it also is required to disclose any gifts that executive officers and board members received that exceeded $250, which we did not have any of that, and also the superintendent's contract. And just to mention, we did receive a good rating on this first report. We'd also like to mention that each year, the district does receive a certificate of achievement and financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. We also receive it from the Association of School Business Officials International, as well as the annual budget award from the Association of School Business Officials. And at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'll open it up to the board if you have any questions. Seeing no questions, I'll open it up to the public if they wish to comment on the presentation that Ms. Benzai just gave.
Mr. President, are members of the public also allowed to ask questions about the presentation?
No, since we aren't voting, no. And I think, I think that's it. Thank you. And we will move, it is 6:12. We'll move to closed session. The board will now move to closed session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, concerning purposes permitted by the act, including 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, 551.074, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignments, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public employee, or to hear a complaint or charge against an employee. And we will move into closed session at 6:12.
Yes, I'm going to come down front, but I'd like to ask our student leaders of the pledge to step forward. Abigail Vitofsky, Michelle Tenard, Cullen Kelly, Jackson Kavier, and Zane Woya. They are all, they are each safety patrol officers at Ed White Elementary. So if you can wait just one second while I come down front. And please, yeah, please join me in welcoming them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Please also join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And students, appreciate you all coming this evening. I understand that you're each members of the school's running club as well, so I thought I'd ask one of you, can you tell me a little bit about what's involved with the running club at your school?
So yes, every year, we have a mileage club that we run around our track, and if you make it, you get to run a marathon for 26.2 miles.
I'd love to come wrong with you guys sometime, so thanks for being here tonight. So I would like to ask Malina Kumar to step forward to be recognized, and then I'll share some information regarding her. So, if you can stand here. And we are thrilled to congratulate Malina. Yes, thank you, Ms., please join us, Mr. Drake. We are thrilled to congratulate Malina Kumar for being named among the top 300 innovators in the nation. She's currently a freshman at Clear Lake High School, but her honor is based on her, the science fair project that she did as an eighth grade student at Brookside Intermediate. So please join me in congratulating Malina. And Malina, can you, will you share with us a little bit about your, about your project?
So I had used a systematic approach to develop a sensitive and specific glucagon ELISA, and from there, I had used healthy and diabetic subjects before and after meal to study four different hormones, which were insulin, C-peptide, glucagon, and oxentomodulin, and I found the differences before and after meal.
She was selected by a panel of scientists, engineers, and educators as part of the national BroadCam Masters National Science Competition. And of the 1,841 students who qualified, as I mentioned earlier, she was one of just 300 selected, so that's pretty impressive. So. the recent Pasadena Livestock Show and Rodeo. They were, had a very impressive showing, and this was the 71st Annual Pasadena Livestock Show and Rodeo. 10 of the 18 students were named as reserve champions or grand champions for their projects, and all of the students have committed to many, many hours of care and training to get, to get to this level of showing. And so we, they collectively have brought in $21,000 for their projects, and a combined total of $55,000 was raised for all 18 entries. And so I'd like to ask students to come up by school, and so please join me in recognizing the honories from Clearbrook High School, Anthony, and please step forward as I call your name, Anthony Jorgensen, grand champion, Brianna Lopez, grand champion, and Naomi Browning, reserve champion. Way to go. Grice. Congratulations. Gracie McKay, reserve champion. Sarah Connor, grand champion. And Olivia Dykes, reserve champion. I would like to take a chance, I know, I've heard some stories about the endless hours, so if one of you can volunteer to share, like, if you think about one of your busier weeks, share with us about one of your, one of your busier weeks, including early and late hours involved with one of those weeks. Will someone volunteer?
When it comes time, like, two weeks before a show, I know for a lot of us, we come up and we feed four times a day before a show. So early in the morning, as soon as you get out of school, middle, like, before you go to bed, and then you'll have a parent go up there in the middle of school, thankful for our parents. We could not do this without them.
And my last question is, I know with, with lives, with animals, it, there's a certain amount of unpredictability. So did you have any particular moments of unpredictability, either in showing them or in preparing them?
So I have a Brahma, and I don't know if you know, but those are the most craziest animals. And when I showed her, I actually got dragged in the dirt, and I lost my belt buckle and the ring, and it was a fun experience for everyone watching, but in the end, it was worth it.
Fantastic.
What's the long haul rate?
It's the big drop the hump.
Oh, everyone's like, so it's the big for the long.
So next, I am pleased to read the following proclamation relating to Red Ribbon Week. Whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas success in changing these statistics will not occur overnight, our patience and continued commitment to drug education and prevention through the work of agencies like the Bay Area Alliance for Youth and Families is imperative. And whereas the red ribbon was chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Quique Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas Clear Creek ISD Board of Trustees asks all teachers, staff, and parents to stand with them to say, be the reason, as part of their commitment to decrease underage Whereas the teachers, staff, students, and parents of Clear Creek Independent School District additionally commit to supporting Red Ribbon Week, October 25th through October 29th, 2021. Therefore, be it resolved, the teachers, staff, students, and parents of Clear Creek Independent School District to hereby proclaim October 21st through the 25th, 2021, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage the teachers, staff, students, and parents that live and work in Clear Creek ISD to wear and display red ribbons and to participate in activities throughout the year to protect our schools and communities from the dangers of alcohol and other drugs. And I'd like to ask Amanda McLaughlin from the Bay Area Alliance for Youth and Family Services to come forward to share some additional information about Red Ribbon Week.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. I'd just like to have a PowerPoint because it makes me stay on track. So I just want to start out, the mission, the alliance, we serve, support, and inspire students and families to build a healthier community for all. And so I just wanted to talk about how we are doing some of those things, and then finish it up with Red Ribbon Week. So we serve, we serve our community. We do medication take backs. In fact, we had one just on Saturday. To date now, since 2010, a twice yearly event, just in the Bay Area, we have collected over 28,500 pounds of unused and expired medications. That is out of the hands of kids, out of the hands of people who might misuse or abuse it. We also have permanent drop boxes at the city of Webster, the city of Nassau Bay, and we have a brand new one coming to the city of Pima. So we're super excited to have other ways and other options for people to dispose their medications. We also serve students. We do this through a project called CCISD Community Connections. We serve our non-traditional high schools, U, Horizons, and PATH. By just trying to meet students, I'll give you an example. We have a student at PATH, is in the custody of grandmother. Grandmother does not have transportation and was not getting her social security check until a certain date, and needed to be able to Uber the child to school. So we reached out to our community connections, who provide an Uber card for that student to ensure that they were able to get to school and get back on PATH, to get back to their regular high school. We also, we are newly nominated as prom coordinators for Clearview and Clear Horizons, so we will be doing that again in April, which is super exciting. And then we do Clearview High School project graduation. We also support the community. We do parent presentations on any number of topics. In fact, we are partnering with the Office of Communications to put out a parent presentation about vaping and some of the other things that are facing our kids coming up in November. We have a vaping task force that is focused on making this community safer for our kids when it comes to cigarette. And we're very involved with Clearview, very timber of commerce. We also support students through Salsa, which is a program, it's a leadership program for kids, and we're super excited to be able to be back at Clearview this year, to continue this project. We also have just had a meeting today with Dr. Ebel and Debra West, and we are going to be starting, we're going to do it as a pilot this year, start it in January, and all 10 intermediate schools will be providing a vaping intervention project for kids who are in ISS due to base. So it's going to be a first offense, but that way, it's, not only are they getting the punishment of ISS, but we're also giving them some intervention to hopefully change the pattern of behavior. And then we inspire. We have a community coalition that serves just Clear Creek ISD. We actually meet on Thursday, and we're having Chad Blackburn, the DPS trooper who was hit by a drunk driver, it took him a year to walk again. He is bringing his car, the dismantled with him, so it will be at Clearview in the morning, and then he will speak at our meeting as well. So we're excited. We support students through Red Ribbon Week, positive alternatives. And I just wanted to show you this year-round Clearview. This week, we did an installation, it's about 60 pictures of stars, whether it was musicians, court figures, or average marriages who died related to drug and alcohol abuse. It's pretty sobering to walk into that cafeteria right now. And there's some pictures of fat and fat because we also distributed Red Ribbon. So thank you guys so much for allowing me to talk a little bit about this.
And thank you, Amanda, for that presentation. We'll move to community input. Tonight, we have five three-minute speakers and one one-minute speaker. The purpose of community input is for the entire board to receive feedback from citizens. The board will hear the public comments but will not respond. Matters brought forth that require a response will be addressed by the superintendent as appropriate. All information received is subject to verification. Community input is scheduled for 30 minutes and has two forums. Those requesting to address the board in advance of the meeting are granted three minutes to address their topics, and those who sign up this evening prior to 6:30 are granted one minute. Public comments regarding items on the board agenda shall be heard prior to public comments regarding any topics not on the board agenda. Non-agenda items shall be heard on a first-come, first-served basis. A total of three speakers shall be allowed for each non-agenda item topic. Public comments of non-agenda items extending beyond the 30-minute timeframe will be heard after all other business of the board is conducted. A staff member will monitor the time. The board has requested that no personal names, insults, abusive, or profane language be used. Failure to follow this request may cause the public comment to be terminated. And our first speaker is Ms. Christine Perizzo, followed by Sheri Faxton.
First of all, does this sound familiar? The board based its decision on which plan best served the needs of over 42,000 students. That was the board's justification for the approval of the 2019 School Boundary Advisory Committee changes, which moved 1,769 students to different schools. That's pretty ironic for a district that's emphasizing individual learning, don't you think? But the district acted in its own best interest, not the students. May I remind this board that your committee ignored a viable alternative plan that met all of the district's objectives and would have displaced far fewer students in West League City. To the community watching at home, get ready, another redistricting is coming. Westland Ranch is under construction, and other neighborhoods in CCISD are growing quickly. Tonight, this board is slated to vote on the second read of its updated policy governing changes to school attendance zones. The only change to this policy is the addition of another public... The only change to this policy is the addition of another public hearing. But since this board and its redistricting committee doesn't seem very interested in community feedback, this additional hearing is useless. I urge the board to remove and reconsider its change to FC local school attendance zones. Many of you won your seats by campaigning on community values. If none of you make this motion today, your lack of action will tell us everything we need to know about where you stand on representing your community. Now let's talk about COVID restrictions. The last normal school year for students was 2018, 2019. Those kindergartners are now third graders. While the COVID-related shutdowns could not have been foreseen, we now know that some cowardly adults would sacrifice children's education and social development for a false sense of security. We now know how quickly and easily our schools can be shut down. Let me tell you, this community will no longer tolerate unreasonable restrictions imposed on our children in the name of fear. Meanwhile, back in August, this board promised us a return to normalcy. Yet, right before school started, the district restricted visitors from campuses for three weeks. And just in time for those three weeks to expire, the district jumped to stage three, extending the restrictions. And we're still there. Cases are now down, community spread is down, and visitors to campuses are still restricted. It's time to move back down to stage four. We, as a community, are telling you, our representatives, to instruct the superintendent to take action. And finally, I've been waiting over five months for responses to two Public Information Act requests regarding data from the May 2021 election. The district is so afraid of fair and free elections that it won't even release election data as Texas state law demands. CCISD can no longer be trusted to run its own elections. I urge the community to support a change to county-run elections for CCISD. Otherwise, we'll end up not with the people's choice on our school board, but the administration's choice.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. I'm a concerned parent of two children who are too young to be vaccinated. We pulled our second grader out of CCISD to attend a private school that prioritizes the health and safety of its students. And we tried virtual school with our sixth grader, but it approved to be too much of a negative impact on his mental health, so he's back in person in CCISD. I'm glad to see COVID-19 cases in CCISD are decreasing along with the rest of the Houston region. However, we're still considered to be a high transmission area, so it's not time yet for a victory lap. The CDC recommends multiple layers of actions and policies in addition to masking to protect students in schools. I give CCISD credit for some areas such as promoting vaccination, hand washing, encouraging sick people to stay home, and cleaning and disinfection. However, I would like to see incentives for faculty and staff to be vaccinated, and CCISD falls short on many other layers of protection, not all of which are precluded by Governor Abbott. You have in your handout and will have in your email inboxes links for relevant CDC guidelines and orders, as well as some highlights of areas of opportunity for CCISD to improve. Some highlights, universal masking. While CCISD does not choose to require masks, it can do a better job of encouraging them. We can incentivize mask wearing for employees, and board members can model mask wearing at school functions. It's also important to note that CCISD is ignoring the CDC order for masking on public transit, which explicitly includes school buses. Maintaining three feet of social distance. This is not always possible, but steps could still be taken to improve efforts of social distancing, such as allowing more students to eat outside when the weather allows it, or keeping students in smaller classroom pods for lunch. Screening, self-report online screening is not effective. The CDC recommends administering COVID screening tests to unvaccinated faculty, staff, and students at least once weekly, and using screening as an inclusion criterion for high-risk activities and extracurriculars. Ventilation, if there's not adequate funding to put a HEPA filter in every classroom, the district should at least organize a campaign to garner donations to make this happen, rather than letting it fall to grassroots efforts. Contact tracing, unvaccinated individuals known to be a close contact to a positive COVID case should be tested and remain isolated for 14 days according to the CDC guidelines. I'm concerned that CCISD seems to be bowing to the wishes of the lowest common denominator who loudly opposes anything that might treat COVID-19 as a serious threat to our community that it is. My kids haven't eaten in a restaurant, been to a birthday party, or generally gone into any crowded indoor space since March of 2020, making school the most dangerous place they've been. They are carrying the load for those who refuse to do their part. It's unfair to students and employees for CCISD to pretend that there's nothing more that it can do to protect us when there clearly is. Please step up your efforts to protect your students and employees. Thank you for your attention.
Next, we have Mr. Adam Newell, followed by Patricia Busman. Mr. Newell. Okay, we'll move to Patricia Busman.
My fifth grader came home and told me, Mom, I saw something weird today on my Sora app. For those of you who don't know, Sora is an app used to research books online. Now, the book my son was referring to is Sex is a Funny Word. This book is rated juvenile, which is why it was available on the Sora Elementary app. Some of the highlights from this book are, when we talk about sex, we usually mean one of three things. One, sex is the word used to describe our bodies, like male, female, and the rest of us. Please tell me what the rest of us is referring to. This book is designed to confuse children and indoctrinate them into believing the nonsense of more than two genders. In the chapter, Learning About Our Bodies, it illustrates the pictures of kids and adults, nipples, breasts, bottoms, vulvas, clitorises, vaginas, and penises. A quote from this chapter is, "Just like every vulva looks different, so does every penis." Now ask me why my second grader needs to know this. Why do children need to see pictures of vaginas and adult erected penises? The chapter, Boys, Girls, All of Us, discuss gender identification at birth. I quote, "When a baby is born, sometimes the people looking see a big clitoris and think it's a penis. Sometimes they see a penis and think it's a clitoris. Sometimes they aren't sure. In a very rare cases of genitalia mutation or disorders, this might be true. However, this book is not speaking of rare cases, and this, in my opinion, is meant to confuse children into believing that even doctors or highly-trained professionals cannot tell the difference between a boy and a girl upon its birth. And I am not sure what is more disturbing part about this book, but it could be the glossary. The glossary is a tool kids are used to understand, uh, used to understand if they need more of a definition. However, the definition of gender, and I quote, "Nobody agrees on what exactly gender means." Most people would say that gender is something to do with being a boy or a girl, but since we are more than just those two options, gender is always more than that. This book is full of propaganda and misinformation used to confuse kids or indoctrinate them. This isn't the only book that was on the Sora Elementary app that I found extremely inappropriate for our elementary children. Since discovering this book, I have been in contact with Suzanne Farrell, the Director of Library Media Services. Suzanne acted quickly and since has, has had the Sora app removed from, temporarily from all of the CCIS platforms. My questions to you are, why are we leaving our schools vulnerable to allow children to see and read things that are inappropriate for their age? And what are you going to do as a school board to protect our children?
And next, we have Neely Miller.
Thank you guys for letting me speak. Do you believe academic excellence happens when kids are under duress or in happy, supportive, nurturing environments? How do you think contact tracing, social distancing, quarantining healthy kids, lack of facial expressions, lack of reading lips, and lack of connection between teacher and child affected our kids' mental, emotional, and educational health this year? Knowing CCISD students had more suicides this last year than COVID deaths, will you be able to live with yourself knowing your restrictive rules and measures forcing these kids to feel as though they can hurt someone just by breathing? Forcing these kids to miss life events they can never get back? Treating children as walking diseased lepers? Does that sound like child abuse to you? I'm so curious how many students on our campuses or on antidepressant medications imagine it's Red Ribbon Week for the traumas that they've been through this last year. I would love to know the portion of money that the government paid you to torture our kids last year. Knowing our federal government gave public schools $190 billion this last year, which is four times more than they usually give public schools. I hope that money helps all of you sleep well at night. Have you asked teachers how happy these kids are this year compared to last? Do you care about their mental health? I'm seeing happy kids right now, and I want to remind you, pulling up all of these strict irrational rules has helped them tremendously. I'm so tempted to say thank you for finally allowing them their rights back, but then I'm reminded, should I thank a thief for bringing back our stuff? These kids were used as pawns this last year, and all I know is we have to make things right. Masks were never needed and was only a tool used to divide and create fear in these children. Seeing faces is one of our best connection processes, according to a January 2021 study involving 100,000 unmasked students and staff. It said 99.968% of children do not get COVID from school, and there were only 32 reported cases of infection. There were zero instances reported of a child infecting an adult. God gave us a whole face for a reason. So my question is, are you brave enough to tell me you believe in God? Because God made you and me in His image. And who do you think wants your face covered? Is it God or is it Satan? According to The Who, it says healthy people should not wear masks. So I will ask this question again, are you sick or are you healthy? Your mask tells me you're sick.
And next, we have Ms. Katie Frazier.
Hello. Um, I'd like to address the board. You recently spoke and you said, um, what would the board do to protect our children? Apparently, they're going to hire a superintendent that has a train wreck of a personal record. I don't understand. Literally, are you telling me that all over the country, there was no one else available? And yet, we were told by every concern that we should just get along to go along, and yet, here we are again. The national media has uncovered yet another Loudoun County issue that in 2020, a child was raped and then not reported to the Virginia Board of Education. While they were investigating that, it has been uncovered that in 2018, under your direction, another child was raped. And while it was reported to the authorities, it was not reported again to the Board of Education. That, and again, it was reported, but not to the authorities, but not to the Board of Education. I brought the paperwork so that you can see that. The only reason that you don't have a child on your conscience is done love, and it's not going to run out of.
Ms. Frazier. While the board appreciates all of public comment, as I, uh, will refer back to, everything is subject for verification. So until things are verified, uh, it's, uh, we, we appreciate the public comment. And I'll just leave it at that. And we will move to district update.
Yes, this evening, I am pleased to be able to share an update regarding multiple topics. I'm pausing for a moment. Yeah, so, um, first of all, I just want to comment that over the past month or so, past several months, elementary principals and teachers have participated in reading academies in support of our emphasis on literacy development, including phonics and phonological awareness in order to improve students' decoding skills. And at the secondary level, we have had fall plays, concerts, and other events where parent participation has never been higher. And our nine-week student grades on average are higher than last year. So another indicator of the value of brick and mortar learning for, for most students. Um, the, the construction and renovation projects funded by the 2017 bond are moving along nicely. Clearview, the Clearview High School rebuild will be completed in time to welcome students into the state-of-the-art school in January. And we are also happy to say that the Ed White Elementary School, uh, Ed White Elementary School STEM Lab is complete, and we're putting the finishing touches on Landall Elementary and Hall Elementary. I'll also note that transportation employees moved into their renovated space over the weekend. COVID-19 active cases within the community and Clear Creek ISD continue to trend downward. And with the significant decrease in active cases, the need for remote conferencing is declining. And so remote conferencing, as you know, is, uh, is conferencing that serves students who are temporarily out of school as a result of illness. So we made the decision to pause remote conferencing, and if warranted in the future, we would reinstitute it. And I will just note, this is separate from the virtual learning program which we're continuing. And October is Principal Appreciation Month. Our instructional leaders are among the best in the nation, and we want to extend our deepest appreciation for the work that our principals, associate principals, and assistant principals do every day for our students. And, um, next, I'd like to ask Dr. Karen Engel to stand while she shares some words of gratitude for her service. I'd like to ask you all to join me in thanking Dr. Karen Engel, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, for more than 20 years of leadership and service to Clear Creek ISD. She's decided to retire at the end of this calendar year, and her impressive career in Clear Creek ISD includes leadership roles at Clear Lake City Elementary, Landall Elementary, Clear Lake Intermediate, Clearview High School, Clear Falls High School, Clear Lake High School, and most recently, the Education Support Center. And her connections within CCISD truly run deep. She attended Clear Lake City Elementary and graduated from Clear Lake High School. And in her formal letter of retirement, she wrote, "I look forward to joining my mom as a retired CCISD teacher." So thank you for your service. And that concludes my brief update this evening.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Williams, and thank you for your service, Dr. Engel, especially. Next, we will move on to, um, action on closed session items. Do I have a motion for item A?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Bowen.
I move that we accept a superintendent's recommendation of Ms. Jerry Lopez for the position of internal auditor.
And thank you for that motion. Do I have a second?
I would like to second.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Is there any comment? Seeing no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. And next, we'll move on to, um, our consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
Mr. President, uh, I wish to pull item 15 from the consent agenda.
All right, Mr. Bowen. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented minus item 15.
And thank you, Dr. DuPont. Do I have a second? Mr. Sanchez, thank you for the second. Seeing no, no comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item 15, please raise your hand. All in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item 15, please raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously, and Mr. Bowen, item 15.
Sure. So item 15 is the policy for school attendance areas. This is the second reading of the policy. Unfortunately, due to personal reasons, I wasn't able to attend the first meeting where this was discussed. The section that I'm concerned about here is the Decision Principles section. And originally, what I thought about doing for this meeting was drafting some language that I'd like to see added to it. But the Decision Principles section basically says, "The following principles shall be among the factors explicitly considered in making attendance zone changes." And they talk about community integrity, which is, when feasible, keeping neighborhoods together, taking into account growth projections, program accommodation, student needs, and then cost effectiveness. And the part of that policy that really concerned me was that third part. Because what I don't want us ever doing, and I don't know whether this has occurred in the past, but I want to make sure it's explicitly not allowed under the policy, is social engineering. And so, what I originally proposed adding and would like to see considered is additional language that would say that the committee shall not consider actual or perceived demographic characteristics when assigning students to attendance zones, including but not limited to race or ethnicity, language, income, socioeconomic status, and historical or anticipated academic performance. So I could bring that forth as an amendment to this policy, but what I'd like to do instead is propose that we send this back to the policy committee to consider that as a change, and then workshop language that we think will withstand legal scrutiny. And so, I'd like to propose that we do that now. And if I need to make a motion, I can, or you can lead the process of doing that without one.
And I think if everyone's in consensus to move it to policy...
So maybe just to make sure we do this parliamentarily, for lack of a better term, I'll word the motion this way, because I don't think we have a process for referring to a standing committee. I move that we postpone the passage or the consideration of FC local school attendance area to the following board meeting, so that the policy committee can have time to discuss the language of the policy and present any recommended changes.
Would you like to say that, in terms of board meeting, the November board meeting?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So will you repeat that one more time?
Okay, so I move that we postpone consideration of FC local school attendance area, second reading, to the November regularly scheduled board meeting.
All right.
I would like to second that.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. Is there any comment? I'll open it up for any comment or discussion.
I did, I do just have a question, and I was just reading back through the language. The language that you read, Mr. Bowen, is language that you saw in an earlier draft or it's language that you were concerned could be the perception if it's not stated?
So the language I originally read, well, I'll, there's the language that's in the policy, and that actually isn't being changed by this proposal. It's in a different section. What I was proposing to include, just to kind of peel back the curtain on how this process went, originally, in the process of writing comments for this agenda like we normally do, I wrote additional language that I would like to see added. And after discussing it with the superintendent, we decided probably the best path forward to give everyone time to review that would be to consider it in a policy committee meeting setting and not just to throw it out on the board's side unseen. So if everyone supports moving forward that way, then...
I'm wondering just about the, whether we should include a time to actually vote in it again, or whether that's restricting ourselves too much, and just, should we just send it back to the policy committee?
So the problem from, the problem I have is that the policy committee doesn't actually operate the way a committee typically would under Robert's Rules of Order. So typically committees consider business for, on behalf of the board, and then they report to the board. So you would have a chair of the committee who would, kind of like we do with our temporary committees that we have on some issues, that they would actually report to the board language that they would like to see considered. But in this case, that's not how we operate. Everything that goes on the board agenda is a recommendation from the superintendent. And so, including this one. Now, the policy committee meeting has discussed it, but they don't actually do business on behalf of the board the way a committee would in other settings. And so, if we refer it to a committee, then the committee is now actually considering language on behalf of the board, and they would be obligated to report back on the outcome in a way that kind of short circuits our normal process.
I guess, I'm, the purpose of the committee is to vet things and to figure out what language it comes about within the board meeting. I don't, or from the board, I don't, the purpose of the committee also is that it's not just one person, one board member's opinion that gets into the language, but it's vetted as a committee, considering everything within the district. And so, and that's the way the committee is set up, so I'm...
Right. So if I were to make a motion to refer it to committee, then what would have to happen under the rules is that the chair of the committee would then report back at a future meeting, and they would offer the revised language as a report of the committee. So, and then that would be voted on by all of us. Even in situations where we've sent things to be discussed further in the policy committee, that's not typically the route they take. Typically, the superintendent still presents a recommendation, so we can do it that way, but it's not how we've ever done things before.
Well, I disagree with that, because I think that is how it's done. It goes back to the committee, the committee talks about it, and it comes out of the committee as a recommendation, and...
Not a recommendation of the committee, though.
It's, everything is a recommendation of the superintendent as it is presented to us.
Right.
And, but those things have all been vetted before it's actually presented as a recommendation. So my actual question had to do with the bringing it back, requiring the bringing it back in November versus leaving that open.
Well, I think, I think, and what I was thinking about is since it's the second reading, that we're close to voting on, you know, on it, and it seems like the revision or looking at it from that particular view shouldn't really take that long. So that's, that's the only reason why I was proposing maybe putting some language in there that gave a, gave a specific, because that would hit our next committee date.
Right.
And, you know, I think it's something that they could probably knock out fairly quickly, but...
So...
Dr. Williams?
So really, I think it makes sense for there to be additional discussion at the policy committee. Staff has an interest in moving forward, you know, with a sense of urgency on this. That being said, if the, you know, there's pros and cons of being specific with that, even if that's the intent, if you omit a specific timeframe, it gives flexibility. Policy committee members may wish to bring it back a second time, recognizing that per the team operating procedures, there can still be a request by members of the board if there's not a sense that the policy committee is proceeding with deliberate speed to bring it back earlier. So really, it's not a problem. Staff can deal with any specific timeframe, but if you omit it, no, we'll move forward with a sense of urgency, and that would give the policy committee, board members of the policy committee, the time that they feel they want to look at it in policy committee while still leaving it to other board members to say, hey, you know, we want to proceed with bringing it to the full board. So either way, from staff's perspective.
So I guess we have a motion and a second. I'll go ahead, since we've discussed, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor of the motion presented by Mr. Bowen, please raise your hand. And all opposed, so we had 6-1. So we look forward to hearing the revised at our next meeting. And we will move on to the District of Innovation Plan. Dr. Bayard.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. I'm here tonight to present to the District of Innovation Plan the renewal for the 2021 through 2026 years. The last year's of Innovation Plan, the first, scheduled to expire on November 28th of this year. The purpose of the Innovation Plan, sounds like it's to make a district innovative, but a district of innovation doesn't make a district innovative. That's the purpose of our strategic plan of moving our district forward. The term used by the Texas Education Agency is a little bit deceptive. What this plan enables us to do, or what it actually does, that allows us to determine exemptions from some state laws, some Texas Education Code requirements, and some of the same exemptions granted, some of the exemptions granted to charter schools. It is an attempt to increase local control, customization, autonomy, and flexibility for our district. Little background on District of Innovation, back during the 84th Texas Legislature in 2015, House Bill 1842, recognized this process as a district of innovation to exempt us from various state requirements. The DEIC Planning Committee held a public meeting on October 19th, 2021, so this month, just last week, to consider and approve the final plan. We received a lot of great feedback from that committee in order to renew our District of Innovation Plan by or before the expiration date. Additional background, September of 2016, only 31 districts had adopted District of Innovation Plan. Just two months later, CCISD adopted our own District of Innovation Plan, and just this month, there are now 911 districts with a District of Innovation Plan. There's a long history of that process. Sorry, the process was pretty lengthy back in 2016, being that this is such a new process and a new plan. Still trying to figure out, is this really innovative or what is it? And of course, we know that it's not innovative. But that started in August 29th of 2016, and by November 28th, through a series of planning, presenting to the board, presenting to DEIC and our community, the board considered the adoption on November 28th of that year. The benefits to our district is that it supports our district in improving our educational outcomes for students as outlined in our strategic plan. It also identifies requirements imposed by the Texas Education Code that inhibit our accomplishment of our Innovation Plan, and it reduces our need to submit waivers to TEA, then oftentimes have to wait for approval from a single person at the agency who might still be at home. There are a number of legal requirements in front of you that cannot be exempted, including statutes such as elected boards of trustees, PEMS requirements, criminal background checks, bilingual and special education, open meetings, public records, nepotism or civil immunity, and the others that you see on the screen in front of you. Just a quick highlight to compare the 2016 plan versus 2021 plan, there are a number that are, that remain, including first day of instruction, minimum attendance for class credit, student-teacher ratios and class size, district and campus level planning, and teacher certification, which is a little bit rebranded and revised for clarity into educator certification requirements. The exemptions that are no longer in the plan include minimum minutes of instruction, and that is because the 85th Legislature repealed the 4:20 daily instructional minutes and seven-hour school day requirements. High school diploma and certificate core sequence. The core sequencing requirement that was in place for English was removed by the Texas Administrative Code. The assessment program is not allowable exemption per TEA, nor is the group health benefits, as our 87th Legislature just forbade alternative group health coverage. In those place, we have, we're bringing forward to the board new exemptions for proposal, including educator certification requirements, a virtual school, removal of unwanted visitors, teacher mentors, teacher and administrator appraisal system, and the campus behavior coordinator designation. The required process was less cumbersome than what was required the first time for renewal, much less cumbersome. We had to have a final version of the plan, proposed plan, posted on our district website for at least 30 days, and so that was by September 23rd is when we had it posted. There's notification to the commissioner, that was done on October 19th, and we actually received feedback from TEA, which was a miracle. We had a district-level DEIC Planning Committee held a public meeting this past week, and they provided a lot of great feedback as well. The Board of Trustees has also given some feedback over the three, three different weeks that information was posted to the Friday packets. And the following steps are to notify the commissioner of the plan if approved, and then post on the website the final revised plan. The public meeting, as I mentioned, was held on October 19th here in the boardroom from 4:30 to 6 o'clock. We had 10 different committee members, including parents, teachers, and administrators. They all gave wonderful feedback and suggestions. The organization of the local plan is there. We have the table of contents for you, and I'll go through each of the, each of the steps. Received feedback from cabinet members, DEIC, board members, and the Texas Education Agency. Of course, we begin with our mission statement, being the visionary leader igniting learning for all, and to ensure each student achieves, contributes, and leads with integrity. And just briefly, I'll, we have our five strategies and specific results statements, dealing with safe and nurturing environment, designing and implementing learning experiences that inspire student achievement, agency, and growth, cultivating social and emotional capacity and commitment to serve for self, expanding our organization's capacity to accomplish our strategic intent, which is really where this one lives mostly, and will ensure our community, parents, staff, and students exercise shared ownership of our mission. So the first exemption is on first day of instruction. Currently, in the Texas Education Code, the first day of school may not be held prior to the fourth Monday of August. We propose to have flexibility to develop our own CCISD academic calendar to begin at a date of our choice. The next exemption is minimum attendance for class credit or final grade, and currently each student must attend classes a minimum of 90% of the days offered to receive credit. We are proposing a system for demonstrating mastery of content beyond the current capacity. And oftentimes, if a student can't make classes for a minimum of 90%, our schools like to provide other options for students to earn that credit, so they don't just automatically lose credit for extenuating circumstances. Student-teacher ratios and class size, K4, may not exceed the 22 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. While we strive to keep that ratio, this provides us an opportunity to present to the board those waiver requests rather than having to submit them directly to the Texas Education Agency. And as you know, we still bring them to the board at the beginning of each year. District-level planning and decision-making requires multiple compliance measures, including the district improvement plan. That's, at the state level, it's, it looks more like a compliance mechanism, and our proposal is to continue that work by deepening the use of our strategic plan as the primary mode of district-level planning. And similarly, at the same, with the campus-level planning, using our campus strategic plans as the primary mode of campus-level planning. Educator certification requirements, the current rule is that teachers must hold the appropriate teacher certificate or permit. And while we absolutely will do our very best to make sure we have the highest qualified teachers, we are proposing the district have flexibility in hiring qualified teachers that have bachelor's degrees, elect certification for difficult to fill positions. Of course, our HR department does very best in working with our campuses of hiring educators that are certified. with, that are certified. The only, the only two positions are, that, that don't fit this are those for special education and bilingual ESL. Next is virtual school, K12. The Texas Legislature allows school districts to operate a local remote program, learning program through September 1st, 2023. We would like to create an asynchronous structure, calling it asynchronous structure for attendance flexibility, but primary mode of instruction being synchronous through a district virtual school beyond September 1st, 2023. And this will allow us that flexibility to fully build out a, a, or a deep virtual learning school for our students who choose this method and are successful. Removal of unwanted citis, visitors for unruly guests at school functions or events. The district must first give a warning before he or she is ejected. Upon ejection, the guest must also be given notice of how he or she can appeal the ejection. We are proposing, in case where immediate action is taken, the district would allow designated staff members the authority to remove a parent or visitor whose behavior is deemed inappropriate without warning or written notice regarding the appeal process. Teacher mentors, currently, the, the code requires teachers to have three or more years of experience to serve as mentors. We are asking for flexibility into designated exceptional teachers with less than three years' experience to serve as mentors for novice teachers. I happen to receive that luxury my second year teaching as a teacher mentor before this was established. Teacher and administrator appraisal system, currently, all teachers and administrators, including those who are exceptional, are to be evaluated yearly. Our proposal is to allow the district to appraise distinguished teachers and administrators to be appraised once every two years. And finally, the campus behavior coordinator designation. Person at each campus must be designated to serve as the campus behavior coordinator. Currently, that is the principal who has been designated that role, and that's on page two of our student code of conduct. We're proposing to allow each campus principal the flexibility to select one or more people to carry out the duties of a campus behavior coordinator, and this will tightly align practice with, with this District of Innovation Plan. The term of the plan is in place for five years unless amended or renewed prior to the expiration of the plan. The renewed plan takes effect only after the, after the term of the district's current Innovation Plan expires, or upon when the board chooses to allow the renewed plan to supersede the existing plan prior to expiration. And so if the board chooses to adopt this plan, my recommendation is to begin this plan on November 1st to allow, I'm just trying to be forward-thinking, to allow the Board of Trustees in, in 2026 to adopt it at the October meeting, so that it's not bound by those specific dates. We'll note that the Texas Education Agency does not have the authority to approve the plan, however, they do provide feedback as, as we received. And any amendment in the next five years that, that is brought forward must be approved by the Board of Trustees and then submitted to the commissioner. I gladly try to answer any questions or listen if you have any comments.
I'll open up, Mr. Bowen?
So I had a couple of questions, one about the process itself. Are we only able to, to amend this every six years, or can we amend it as needed? And, and this is just planned to last six years before we're required to renew it?
We can amend this as, as needed. In fact, in the last five-year District of Innovation Plan, there were two amendments. One was in April of 2017, and the last one was in April of 2021. And so the board does that, have that discretion, and once amended, then the amended plan needs to be submitted to the Commissioner of Education.
And then my other question was about the, the committee, the DEIC. I noticed on the, in the presentation that there were 10 people, 10 members in attendance. Seven of them were teachers, two of them were administrators, and one of them was a parent. Does that reflect the, I, I guess, looking at the full makeup of the committee, that's not the entire committee, right? How many, how many more people are on the committee who didn't attend?
That's not the entire District Education Improvement Council, but that is a majority of the planning committee. There were five other members who did not attend from the planning committee.
Okay, so, so i- is this, so only the planning committee develops and votes on this? It's not the entire DEIC?
Well, this is a, a new process. It's the first renewal that we've ever had as a district, and we have the, the option of determining our own committee in a public forum to, to renew the plan. So we went with that path.
Okay. So i- is that, is the makeup of that committee and, and who would be on any subcommittee that considers future changes set forth in policy, or is that just been at the discretion of the administration?
It's not a policy, it's a discretion of administration and the board.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there anyone else?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to commend the work that's done here. There's been quite a few changes, and I really believe this is a plan that will help us all move forward. I appreciate the diligence, and I appreciate the responsiveness on late changes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President. You want to go? Go ahead. Ladies first. Dr. DePonte.
I have a question about the campus behavior coordinator designation. Can you help me understand what the, what including this does for us? Because it seems to me that from the Texas Education Code, there is the flexibility for it to be anybody on the campus other than the principal, which it seems like that, that's the proposed lan, that's the justification for the proposed language?
Yeah, the Texas Education Code is, is specific and require the campus principal to either assume that role, him or herself, or to designate one person, a single person to serve as a campus behavior coordinator. This, this exemption allows the principal to, to designate all the assistant principals, for example, at a high school, to serve in that role in that capacity. So it does provide that flexibility, so that if, if the principal is out or that single designee is out, the others can, can work in that capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you. So first day of instruction, the goal is not to go to year-round school, right?
No, sir, we have not had any discussions about that, nor are we entertaining that at this time.
Okay. And then the other thing about it is, so there's a mandate, right? You can't start school before the Fourth Monday of August. We've had, I think, is a nice feature is this past year is the staggering for the incoming pre-K, K 6th grade, 9th graders. So by us doing this, or that's the goal, right, is to continue trying to provide that kind of service?
This allows us flexibility to begin before the Fourth Monday, and it does allow us to, to stagger, which we have that ability anyway. We, the, the DEIC Subplanning Committee really emphasized that ability to stagger and put that in the plan, which I thought was a great recommendation.
And I think the parents have really enjoyed that, as well as the students. And then still keep the processes in place with regards to approval of calendars and everything as well, right? The DEIC still make the recommendations.
Yes, sir.
With community input.
We still have a calendar committee, which is working through that process now. That, that counter committee will bring their recommendation to the superintendent, and the superintendent brings that recommendation to the Board of Trustees for, for input and, and for the board's approval for the calendar.
Thank you.
I have a question about minimum attendance for class credit or final grade. How, how is this new system going to be developed for demonstrating the mastery of the content beyond the current capacity?
Sure, it's not really a new system, because we've had this, this waiver in place for the last five years, but I'll give you an example. If, if a student attends class 85% of the semester, and maybe they're, they've had some health issues, there are opportunities for after-school or, or attending a Saturday, for example, tutorial sessions. And so if the student is successful academically, has, has the grades, then this, this waiver allows the student to still earn credit, rather than automatically denying them that credit, just because of not adhering to the 90% policy.
I have another question.
Mr. Bowen?
What, I'm, I'm looking at the District of Innovation, the actual text of the plan in our agenda packet, and I don't see a page that discusses the campus behavior coordinator designation. Is that?
It's the one that was on here.
Oh, okay, it's, it's in the printed packet?
Yeah.
Okay. Did that get added at some point?
It did. It was added today based on, on board feedback, board member feedback. So. Which is a good, there are other districts that have this designation, and I thought it was a good observation.
So, so this, the actual text of that addition was written today?
Yes, sir.
So I, I was also reading through the Q and A that talks about the process for adopting the plan, and it, it says that in order for the plan to be adopted, it has to be voted on by a majority of the committee designated to develop the plan. That majority has to then approve it, and then it comes to the board to be voted on. So if, if that page was not voted on by the committee, is it legal for us to vote on it and adopt it as part of the plan?
It is. The committee voted on, on the plan, and this, this was brought forward by a board member, just like you have that option tonight to make edits for the final plan. And any revisions or suggestions that the board has tonight doesn't have to go back to the Planning Committee for, for a full vote.
Do we have that option?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
And, and I, I'll just add, because I don't want there to be misperceptions about the lack of mentioning the name, Mr. Larson received, you know, the, the posted board materials, and after reading them, said, hey, have you thought about doing this? And so we thought it was an excellent idea, and so it was relatively simple, straightforward. And given the ability to bring revised documents, decided to do so. Recognizing that worst-case scenario, if the full board wasn't comfortable with it, and had additional questions, we could always submit an amendment later on.
I, okay, I'm concerned about that, because I'm reading, I'm reading this process here. It says, and it's, we can all read it on page 212 of the printed, of the computer version of the agenda. And it says that the, the public, there's a public hearing on whether to develop a plan, that does not have to occur. The final version of the proposed plan is on the website for 30 days. So that was supposed to occur by September 23rd. So if there's language that was not posted on the website by September 23rd, is it legal for us to adopt that?
It is. In fact, the Texas Education Agency referred to that posted plan. We're supposed to post the plan, then email it to the commissioner, and I received feedback from the accreditation department at TEA with feedback. And in their email specifically noted that while they don't have the, the ability to approve the plan or, or not approve it, they did ask us to, to take, consider their recommendations and feedback, and then post the revised plan on the website.
Okay. I, I just wanted to be absolutely sure.
I had the same questions and, and, and so going through the language and talking to TEA, that's the process.
Okay.
And, and I want to add, I had exactly the same question, and I offered that in the spirit of, can we work this in? And if we can't, I am perfectly happy with making an amendment later. And I was very surprised to learn that we can, we can add it now. And looking back at this and reading through the TEC, to me, it's, it seems like there's a much more arduous procedure for adopting this thing the first time than there is to either amend it or to renew it.
Okay. So, so yeah, what, I guess what it sounds like to me is the committee is necessary to sort of crack open the process for making changes to the plan, that after that process has started, they don't have to be looped back in. Once they have approved something, the board can essentially act as it sees fit.
That's correct.
Okay.
At, at least at this meeting now, if, if the board wants to come back and, and make an amendment, I would bring back the, the Planning Committee.
Right.
And we would bring that to the board, at which time the board can then again make any amendments to that.
Okay.
Thank you for that question.
Any, are there any additional questions? And seeing no questions, additional questions, I'll call for a vote. Or, I'm sorry, I'll call for a motion for item B.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the plan, plan, plan of innovation as submitted by the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Actually, renew it, I think is the correct, correct term.
Yeah, renew it. Thank you, Mr. Larson. Do I have a second? Thank you, Dr. DePonte. Any more questions? Any more comment?
I, I will make a quick comment. I, I do think the plan is well thought out. I, I do appreciate the flexibility that we're given under the law to do this, and I, I think we should continue to explore, just in the spirit of local control, what are the flexibilities that the, that, that these District Innovation Plans give us? Because I, I know we feel constrained by a lot of unfunded mandates and other laws imposed on districts by the state. And so I, I think we should always kind of be thinking in the back of our minds, when we run into something like that, that we don't think is helpful, how can we incorporate that into our District of Innovation Plan in order to do the, do the right thing for students in our community? So I, I appreciate all the work that went into it.
Thank you. And once again, to the DEIC and those on the committee, and also I know who did the heavy lifting in terms of some of the, some of the things that had been presented, especially recently, for taking a look and trying to incorporate that into our new plan. So thank you for that comment, Mr. Bowen, and also thank you, Mr. Larson, for pointing that out, because when I took a look back, I saw some of the other districts had actually made that designation in terms of the campus behavior coordinator designation. So, so thank you for actually pointing that out. Seeing that there's no other comment, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion carries unanimously. And seeing no further business before the board, I will adjourn us at 8:00 PM.